Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the North Rose Wilkett Central School District Board of Education meeting. I'm Lucinda Collier, President of the Board, and I will call the meeting to order. And let's stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now entertain a motion, please, to approve the agenda. Linda and Izzetta. There is a correction on the agenda. If you'll turn to page five, number nine of the consent agenda. It's on the very tip top of the page. You'll see the second line down says March 28, 2022, and ending August 26, 2021. That, please change that to 2022. Everybody find it? Okay, good. With that, is there any discussion on the agenda? Then, all in favor of approving the agenda? Motion is carried. Mr. Pollan, I'll turn it over to you for the presentations.
Okay, thank you very much. So as Tina brings up the slideshow, just want to touch base regarding this particular presentation. I believe it was early winter where Mr. Sloan asked us to consider doing a presentation on electric buses and whether they were a viable option for North Rose Wilkett. So since that time when Jason brought the initiative forward, it's become very clear that the state is really gearing up towards more of that same type of initiative. So in January, Governor Hochul actually put forth some measures to say that we were looking to push this initiative statewide. And so when we get down to her Assembly Bill A4302, basically what they're saying is that by the year of 2035, their goal is to have 100% of new passenger cars and trucks be zero emissions. Really, what she's starting to think about for schools, Tina, you can go to the next slide, is that by 2027, you know, she wants to start seeing school districts make the purchase. And the goal for the state and the goal for everybody with respect to this is to reduce the emissions by 85% by the year 2050. So in 2027, she would like school districts to start purchasing them. And then by 2035, medium and heavy duty vehicles would be replaced by electric vehicles. So as she goes to the next slide, you're going to start to see that really, when you look at the current cost and what we're projected at for our bus, I'll go to the right column first. The total purchase price of our school buses is debatable and about $144,056, what we pay currently per bus. In comparison to an electric bus, only the base price is currently debatable. So when we put the same comparable options against a diesel operated bus or diesel powered bus, rather, you're going to see that that cost goes up substantially. And I won't read line by line for you, but I want you to take a look at that. That's almost a three to one cost. And when we think about electric buses, we're talking about individual charging stations versus one fuel pump. All right? And the other piece is that you really, I'm going to focus on for you is the capacity in terms of miles per trip. You know, when we charge up an electric bus, you know, you see the range is very limited. And in our district where I believe we're approximately 120 square miles, it's not to say that every bus travels 120 square miles a day, but in the morning run, we're about 68 miles, according to Mr. Barnes' data. So stop to stop, you know, from the bus garage to the building, picking up our students, we're about 68 miles on average. And you notice the very different fuel capacity because we purchased our school buses with 100 gallon tanks. So really, between the diesel capacity, the base option versus the options we put on there, the fast charging stations per bus, we're talking about 20,000 to 60,000 for the charging stations. You know, again, a three to one cost ratio and about a 10 minute charge versus a three minute charge for, you know, our school buses to be refueled. And that three hour charging is, you know, assuming that our buses only get down to about 30% capacity for the battery. So my point with bringing that up is that right now, it seems cost prohibitive. And one of the biggest factors for us to think about is the fact that electric bus will not charge in temperatures 32 degrees or below. Okay, so Tina, if you go to the next thing, I think what we're really getting into is we're talking about not just school buses. We're talking about infrastructure, you know, and the ideal setting for charging is 70 degrees. And then I just mentioned the fact that the batteries won't charge at a temperature below 32 degrees. And as we go through and we meet that target deadline of 2035, you know, it's going to require ongoing driver training and ongoing mechanic training, you know, very different setup. There are definitely environmental factors and trade offs that we have to consider. But when it comes down to it, you know, we're in the infancy right now. We would have to certainly work with RG&E to figure out whether or not we needed to create a new substation, which is, from my understanding, which is limited, requires new transformers, upgrades to our power service, and really looking at our current setup structurally and whether we have the right capacity. When we think about the climate we live in, we know with certainty that 32 degrees or below is really a very strong probability. We're talking about five to six months, you know, depending upon the nature of the weather that we run into from October through March or October, and in some cases through April, as I know next week slated to be cold. You know, so the ideal setting is currently, in my opinion, an indoor parking garage, which we currently do not have. Benefits of the electric bus, there's fewer moving parts, so meaning that there's less work for our mechanics to work on. But it's certainly going to be more technical, a little bit more skilled in terms of how to service a bus safely when it comes down to electricity. And our drivers are going to have to know how to handle a bus. They've talked about this being a glorified golf cart, per se. But when you think about they're transporting our most valuable assets, which are our children, there's a large part about the driver and training that's going to need to go into it. So the other factor we want to think about as we discuss this more is the fact that the school buses account for really a relatively small portion of the greenhouse emissions that are out there. You know, the Environmental Protection Agency has talked to us about the efficiencies of diesel school buses. And right now, in a study that they did in 2021, diesel school buses, based on the efficiencies in the work, are almost as effective when it comes down to the emissions as some of these electric buses. They're putting off nitrogen oxides, particulate matter, hydrocarbon and carbon monoxide. And then carbon dioxide is the primary greenhouse emission that comes out of diesel engines. So that's the largest variable is that carbon dioxide, which is something that we know is dangerous. So the potential for electric school buses is there. The power grid, I know, I believe Mrs. Young Love mentioned before in conversation when we started talking about this conversation, you know, we're not quite sure whether our infrastructure, in terms of the power grid, is capable of offering up enough capacity, you know, for all of these school buses. So that's also something that we need to consider when it comes to the infrastructure. Tina, if you can go to the next slide. So for us right now, in its current matter, we really need to think about, does this make sense for us financially at this point in time? You know, so as a board, at the end of this presentation, I'm hoping we can have a discussion to figure out, you know, do we want to continue to explore this matter further? Do we want to really look deeper into the infrastructure that's required to make this happen at North Rose Wilkett? Do we want to look at the cost of an electric bus, which is approximately two to one, almost three to one greater per bus? Do we want to spend about $450,000 to $1 million more on the bus purchases that we're going to propose in the spring? You know, and I think that when we think about our current bus garage, do we envision putting the money into that footprint when we know the capacity's pretty much served its life expectancy for what we do right now? So I want to think about those things. And I also want us to consider, you know, do we want to explore another possibility, which could be, you know, biodiesel or waste oil or something to that effect, you know, when it comes down to fueling our school buses? Do we want to look at renewable diesel fuel made from animal and waste products rather than petroleum? Because we found out that, you know, if we used animal waste products or, you know, renewable diesel, that that can cut emissions by 50 to 80%. So until the cost of electric buses come down, I think we really need to think long and hard about our investment and whether or not the electric buses make sense for us. So at the end, really, what it comes down to is the prerogative of the board. And I'll move forward. And I know I've gone through this in a fairly succinct and quick fashion. But as always, you can move to that next slide, Tina. As always, I'd like to thank Jeremy Barnes and the Transportation Department for what they do. And I want to entertain any questions the board may have. And if it's not as extensive as you had hoped, I'd like you to give me feedback on that so that I can get a little bit further into the details. Any questions? Linda?
Yeah, I know before we were investigating it, the things that you touched on, needing a larger footprint for the buses to be inside. But the other thing that I was more concerned about was really how much the support, the units for charging would be costing and all of that. Front loaded is a lot, is a lot. So thank you for clarifying those points.
Yeah, and it's something that they discussed as recently as this past Saturday because, you know, the state budgets due next Friday by April 1st. And I know that the electric buses is something that Governor Hochul is really pushing hard for. And I know that there's a lot of momentum out there about increasing the amount of aid that school districts can receive in order to make that happen. The big thing for me is regardless of the aid factor that we receive, it really comes down to the environmental factors, climate being the primary one that would prohibit us from moving in this direction, in my opinion. So Jason, you had a question?
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to investigate that. And I think it draws to the conclusion of we're probably doing the right thing by looking at it right now, knowing that it's coming down the pipeline sooner or later. There's a lot of what ifs as far as if the power went out in the middle of the night, how do we get kids to school if the buses aren't charged? So I agree with you wholeheartedly that it's nothing that we want to jump into. But I think if we have people talking about it and we have people looking at it over time, if the right program came out, maybe we get one and set it up and see how it works before they implement any requirements down the road. You know, maybe if they did come out with some additional aid for a school to try it out, it'd be a good conversation piece between the board and all parties involved. But thank you for taking the time to do that. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. I think your assessment's pretty accurate. I liken the electric school buses to the microwave oven. You know, when we were all coming out, the first microwave oven was this fantastic piece of equipment that people wanted to have. But if you think back to it, that microwave oven, the first rendition of it was about $1,000. So it really became an exclusive item for a select few. And as the product became copied and as it became more and more available, the prices went down, no different than our flat panel TVs, you know? We went from having TVs as big as a dresser to now having TVs that, you know, weigh, you know, 25 to 30 pounds and have increased their screen size significantly. So I think that that's a factor to keep in mind that we'll continue to keep an eye on it. I think the state needs to do a better job of thinking about a district of our makeup where we're 120 square miles and whether a rural population is going to benefit the same way an urban population would. You know, if I'm able to get 65 miles to 100 miles on a full charge, does it make sense in the inner city? It may versus out here where the environmental factors and the road conditions change as well as the distance of an average trip to pick up our riders to capacity. So I think all those are things, but, you know, diesel costs are something that, you know, we're going to think about as Gary gets into his presentation with the budget, being efficient, something that we need to think about. And again, the makeup of our transportation and building itself is not really suited for what we're thinking about in the future. So that's also something that when we consider, do we want to go to electric buses? We need to factor in, is our capacity to serve our buses going to be met in the current footprint of that building? Send up?
That was very informative, and I'm glad to know all that. As for the, and I just don't think it's a viable thing for us to continue researching at this point. I do think that by the time 2035 comes around, there will be incentives and there will be improvements. And maybe even a different kind of setup entirely that the state will want us to go to. Is for alternative fuels, I would hate for us to be putting money into something now that we may, that the next board down in 2035 is going to have to just throw away. It just seems as though what we were doing is the right thing. If any school district's emissions are low, it's going to be ours because of our system of changing out our buses and having new buses that meet the best possible safety and environmental standards as possible. So I think North Rose Wilkett is in really good shape, both with what we expend for buses and in what we're doing to help our environment. Are there any board members who feel strongly that Mr. Pollan and Mr. Barnes should pursue this further at this time? And we thank you. Yo, Paul?
Yeah, I'm in agreement, just a couple of comments. One is the battery technology is getting a lot of effort right now in the investigative world. So batteries are getting better every day. This may have a different equation five years from now. And then I just had a quick question. Did we factor in when you turn the heater on on electric bus?
Well, the data that they've given us factors all of those things, you know, in terms of the life expectancy and whether it wears down based on air conditioning, the heater running. The, you know, our current buses have, you know, heated windshield wipers, heated mirrors, all that stuff. So the data that we were given from some of our vendors suggests that, yes, they have. But again, until we actually see it, you know, it's that range that they're giving us, that 65 to 100 is factored in there. So I think you're right. The more research on batteries, the better batteries become, the more likely the costs come down. And I also feel like the cost of the charging stations will go down as well. But I do believe that the data that they provided us with is assuming ridership under normal conditions. And for us, you know, we're one of the school districts that does purchase school buses with air conditioning on it right now. So definitely, I mean, again, you give me feedback on how you want me to move forward. We'll keep going with it. And if it's right now, just sit and watch and, you know, keep a close eye on what happens, we can do that. But I do agree, and I am thankful for our district's foresight, you know, to replace our buses on a five year cycle, which would also be something we'd have to consider moving over to the battery. You know, would we stay with that five year cycle? Or would we transition to the eight year life expectancy of a battery? Because remember, most of our buses are under warranty because of that five year cycle. And we get a very good amount of trade in value when we turn those buses in after five years. Anything after or anything beyond the five year capacity, the drop off for a trade in value is significant. So we want to think that thing through also.
I think for the time being now, I think it's just a, we've been informed, we're looking at being progressive, but at the same time, now is not the time. So thank you so much for the presentation and.
Absolutely. So before we move on to Gary's piece, thank you for that. Before we move on Gary's piece, Tina, can you just turn to the next slide? Just want to factor this in again. You know, there's two things of considerable significance that might impact our community and our taxpayers that I really want to point out to the Board of Education and the community at large. So recently, my colleagues and I from the Wayne Finger Lakes Superintendent's Group sent a letter to Senator Gillenbrand regarding the universal free meal program. There's a lot of momentum picking up to say that that program might list, or excuse me, might be limited and cease to exist, rather. So it's something that I think we're good for the remainder of the school year, that the free lunches will stay intact. But our concern is moving forward as we come out of the pandemic and that the rate of inflation is the highest it's been since the 80s. I think that this would be a detrimental move for our government to withdraw the universal free meal program. So I want to make the board and our community at large aware that we have written that letter to Senator Gillenbrand. We are meeting with Assemblyman Mantillo tomorrow, and we'll bring this point of contention up to him and see if we can advocate, again, at the state, local, and federal levels to really make our voices be heard. And then the other concern, right prior to Gary's presentation on the budget, I just want to call attention to the potential of the loss of $440,000 if the County Board of Supervisors decides to take back the sales tax sharing program. The people that are referenced on your screen, I know a few of them have been contacted. And I know that their response has been, it's just in the discussion phase right now. I'll reiterate what I've said before, which I don't think is inaccurate. I think that this is a move that if it comes out during these financial times, it's detrimental not only to North Rose Wilkett, but the other 10 county school districts. It's something that our revenue sharing program benefits all taxpayers because the loss of the potential of six teaching positions and six people doing business in the county would have a compounding effect, in my opinion. And it's something that our County Board of Supervisors, I think, were one of two counties that currently share sales tax revenue. I think that the only way they would make that money up would be to increase costs on homeownership and taxpayers. So coming out of a pandemic, when gas prices are $5 a gallon, I would just encourage people to reach out and become informed as to whether or not this is something that makes sense during the financial times that we're in. And the people listed there, Supervisor Johnson, Supervisor Leonard, and Supervisor Donald T. are the subcommittee looking at it. And then obviously, Rick House is our county administrator. And I understand that they're charged with doing a job for their specific county or specific township they're representing and the county. But I think that this is one that's counterintuitive at this time. So I will entertain any questions or comments regarding that as well. And if there are none, we'll turn it over to Gary to get started with the budget information.
Michael, do you know roughly, and I don't need an exact number, but what dollar amount that the reduced or the free lunch program would, how that would affect our district in a dollar amount?
Um, you know, I don't know what the dollar amount is off the top of my head in terms of, so if you think about it, between breakfast and lunch together, you're probably talking about $5 a child. You know, between, I think it's $1.75 roughly for breakfast and about $3.30 for lunch, approximately. So if you think about $5 per child, 1,142 students daily, that's pretty significant in terms of, you know, even the average household, if they have two children, you know, and you're incurring the cost of $10 a day, so $50 a week, that's something that's pretty significant. And again, during the pandemic, when people have grown accustomed to having a little bit of financial relief through that universal free meal program, I can't emphasize enough how detrimental it'll be, especially with everything else, the cost of goods going up, product size going down, and then the strain that people are under because of the supply chain interruptions. I mean, Rita's done a fantastic job of offering our kids meals that they've become accustomed to. But she and her team have had to do a lot of work to adjust based on the supply chain interruptions alone. So now you factor in the cost, it's something else that she's got to consider again entirely. So I'd say to you, Jason, probably about $5 a day per child is an assumption of what a family would, you know, the cost a family would have to incur.
It's almost $1 million. Just with some quick math. Not a good time to do it with assessments going up and gas going up and. All right. Thank you, guys.
Yep. Anything else? Okay, we'll get started with Gary's presentation. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you very much, Mr. Pollan. And I appreciate all of your remarks on the on the electric buses and on that school lunch program. Yeah, that program, that school lunch program, it's a self-supporting program. And so the loss of the free lunches going back to charging our students is, would be borne by the families of our district. And it's something we definitely do not want. So I appreciate all the comments, actually. So here we are with our next series of budget presentations. And you've seen this slide. Again, I just like to show that as a benchmark of, And you've seen this slide again. Again, I'd just like to show that as a benchmark of as we continue to develop the the budget. Next slide, please, Tina. Thank you. And this slide, I just wanted to show once again, before we go into the other three categories of the seven major categories that I started to provide the board an overhead view of with our last meeting. So this is just to tell you, here is our balanced budget. Everything that we're proposing is on the expenditure side, which the voters approve, is supported by the revenues there on the left. So just to demonstrate right here in the snapshot picture, a sound balanced budget. We can support the appropriations that that we're putting forth to to the voters with those revenues, estimated revenues on the on the left. So next slide, please. So last meeting, we covered the shaded out areas of these categories of the budget. And tonight, we're going to focus in on those blue highlighted amounts, the instruction, community services, employee benefits. So this is the same slide you saw two weeks ago. Now we're talking about these three categories. So next slide, please, Tina. Thank you. So here are those three areas of the budget that we're focusing in a little bit tonight. It's only, it's three areas, but you can see here, this is really about seventy-four percent of the total budget. So it's broken down in a comparative way on the on the left and on the right is what that pie chart looks like for these three categories. So instruction, that's what we're here for. That's that's what we're all about, right? And these other areas, employee benefits, we're a people-driven organization. All of our benefits are pulled out separately and categorized here in this undistributed area of our budget. And our instruction and other areas of the budget, they contain our salaries and equipment lines and supplies and and so forth. So that's what that that pie chart kind of displays right there. And if you take a look at this, these three areas of the budget, nothing really jumps out as alarming in terms of instruction. That instruction line is going up just over two and a half percent. That's largely just due to our contractual obligations for our employees. That's mostly salaries in in the instruction budget. We're going to talk about what's in that instruction budget a little bit more in depth here. Next line of community services, that's just going up one point six percent. But this has been the real challenge, which we all have heard about now since the beginning, the real cost drivers is typically our health insurance. And and we also have to be concerned year to year with our increase in retirement cost. This year, and we'll break this down when we take a look at the employee benefits. The 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 big cost driver here is our health insurance. So overall, our employee benefits increase is is going up about seven hundred thousand or just over ten percent of the budget. So that's very significant. Next slide, please. Okay, here I have the instructional budget broken down. What's in this instructional budget? These are the categories. So this is a very large, of course, section of the budget. This is just a broad overview to show you how each of these categories of the instructional budget are broken down and the increases from one year to the next. Okay, I think we can go to the next slide. So here we have those areas broken down just to show the board and the public what is in the admin curriculum budget, what's in the regular ad budget and so forth. So it's just instruction, but there's various components of that. And I'll just give you a minute to, you know, look over those services and pieces of each of those categories. And I know you see this in your monthly treasures report now. You can see these areas, the original budget and so forth. So these are very familiar to you. Sometimes the those line items don't explain exactly what's in these various areas, but but here we go. So next slide, please. Okay, because the pupil services budget is such a large piece and breaking that a little little bit further further down for you. It's guidance, health services, psychological and social services, and then we have our co-curricular and athletic budget under the pupil services budget. So you can see, once again, the dollar amount changed, the percentage changed from one year to the next. The I'll maybe just point out, I'll wait to the next slide here, I guess. Go ahead, Tina. Yeah, I was just gonna cover like, if we can go back to the prior slide, please. Like my sheets might be a little in a different order. But I was just going to point out on the athletic budget, co-curricular athletic budget. It's a thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven thousand dollar increase, but the percentage looks pretty pretty high there. That's mostly to cover some coaching salaries in there. When we meet for the budget workshop in two weeks, we're going to cover a lot of these areas in a more comprehensive way with the board. So I just want to throw that in there. That was just about a ten thousand dollar increase just to cover our anticipated coaching costs there. Next slide, please. Okay. Here's the second section that we want to cover. It's not a huge piece of that pie to the right. It's small, but it's significant. And this is the area where we cover mainly our SRO services. So the bulk of the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars earmarked for next year is to maintain our our SRO program. That is for the safety and security of all of our students and staff. So the the current level of services that that we have in SRO in each of our buildings, we anticipate maintaining that level of service. A couple other minor things in the community service budget has to do with maintaining our pool and our golf and fitness center along with our adult ed program. Next slide, please. So thank you. So here's our benefit lines broken down a little bit. So if you go right down to the bottom of the comparative data on the left under medical and dental, that's where you see that big increase. Although it's shown an eighteen and a half percent increase. Overall, we've had to squeeze that budget down a little bit. That's where there was a little room to trim down. And I say that because the insurance rates have gone up for this year or for for next year. Twenty-two percent, twenty-one point nine percent to be precise. So this is a real budget killer for us. So what we've had to do is take a close look at various lines in the budget, squeeze a little bit here and there to to offset this huge increase in our insurance cost. And we will be talking a little bit more in depth in two weeks about how we've done that. And yet still maintain the ability to enhance our programs or some of our programs and do some great things at North Rose. So other areas of the retirements, I was able to bring down the employees' retirement system line item. Those costs, they've, those rates have remained relatively stable. There's a little bit extra in there, so that came down a little bit. We had a slight increase in our teachers' retirement cost. So there again, that is reflected. So on the unemployment insurance, that's coming down about forty-five thousand dollars. I anticipate that should be well enough to cover our unemployment insurance costs. In addition to what we're budgeting here, we're also planning some use from our unemployment insurance reserve. So that's one reason that line item is is coming down. Okay, next slide, please. So that really concludes the the big overview of those seven categories between two weeks ago and tonight's slides to showing where we are with the budget at this time. The overall budget is reflecting a three point four percent increase at this time. We are entertaining some some changes to that budget. It it may go up a little bit. One of the things that we're looking at. And before we make a final decision on that, we wanted to wait till after the budget has passed. But you may have heard that there is legislation in both the Senate and Assembly Houses to increase the cap on our capital outlay projects. Now, that's something, and currently it's at a hundred thousand dollars, and we have that built in our budget. But we would love to be able to start bringing that up to the cap that they're talking about. And if I were to use the assemblies version, that would come right up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we may be able to increase that capital outlay budget. Mr. Pollan and I and and others are putting our our heads together to to fund any possible increase in that area.
Gary, can I just jump in and piggyback on that? So to the board and the community, if we did increase that this year, so your capital outlay projection for next year is renovations to the high school library media center, and the current rate is capped at a hundred thousand dollars per year. So the work that we've got planned for the high school library media center, you know, would require us to do that over two, maybe possibly more years based on the fact that the renovations in there haven't been made or maintained in quite a while. So we want the board and the public to consider that because we think we could get it done in a year under this new revised allotment of money for capital outlays. Again, it not only capitalizes on the ability to maximize our aid, it also does the structural enhancements that our kids need and deserve. So I want our board to consider that. And I also want to factor in that we won't just go in with one option because you'll know there's been some damage to the elementary gymnasium floor. And we want to keep all options open in terms of maximizing the return on our state aid. So when Gary speaks about that potential increase, we will get into that a little bit more extensively during the budget workshop. But that's something that we want to consider right now so that people are not caught off guard by that.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. And I want to also say that if we do decide to do to raise that hundred thousand dollars up, we still believe that we can do that without increasing our our taxes whatsoever. So and the way that we would do that is is to take a look at the the entire budget or and or appropriate additional fund balance to help offset that cost or increase our level of reserve funding to support that. So we can do this, we believe, without any impact on the tax levy or tax rates. Okay. So I just wanted to throw out that, throw that out there. And we're meeting the those other targets within our budget. And I've I've shared this before, but that's where we are now, and we're still there. So we're, we feel good and confident about that. And just to bring us back to the timeline, it seems like this budget season is flying by very, very fast. So here we are, we're just one week away from the state budget being due. I don't anticipate any windfalls in terms of aid in that. We we just talked about some proposals that may come through, including that capital outlay. So we'll see where we land after that. And then a week, two weeks from now, a week after the state budget is out, anticipated anyhow, and we expect that that will be out on the first. We'll have our budget work session. And at that time, the board will see a more comprehensive view of our entire budget. We'll go over a lot and we'll have the opportunity to have have some discussion about the budget and the the board will be able to discuss any changes and we can talk about then bringing together a final budget and listening to any changes that might take place between the seventh and the fourteenth. And that being presented before the board adopts it on the fourteenth. We also anticipate, you know, getting into, when I say a more comprehensive view, you'll see the budget in very different ways. We'll be looking at the various public budget documents that will that should be finalized at that point, looking at more programming and staffing items that the board should be interested in in hearing about, but we're excited about all that. Okay. And then May fifth is the budget hearing will be really the the final presentation for the public and and the board. But I wouldn't anticipate any changes. Certainly not in the the authorization amount of the budget from the fourteenth to May fifth. So the budget process is rapidly coming to an end, actually. So looking forward to having a conversation with the board on the seventh.
Thank you.
And if there's any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. I think we'll we'll probably save our questions as we get into it on the budget workshop for more clarity if if it needs to happen at that time. We will move on to reports and correspondence. There is report here. Paul, do you want to address the policy committee with the bylaws? The community relations and the administration and the non-instructional business separations? Anything you'd like to say about that?
Yes.
Paul is the chair of this committee.
So it's kind of a new spin where we've grouped a whole lot of these policies together and marked them as reviewed. So one of the goals of the policy committee this year is is to look at all the policies that have old dates on them. So most of these, not all of them, but most of these have a date of almost two decades ago. So the policy committee has reviewed them, but we've determined that, you know, even though the date is old, they're very appropriate and we need to keep them. One of the goals is to mark these these policies and as reviewed, so it doesn't look like nobody's looked at this since nineteen ninety-seven. Well, actually, we have, and we think they're good and we want to keep them. So that's the whole goal here is to acknowledge these policies and mark them as reviewed. And if there's any questions on that, I'm entertaining questions. Okay, hearing that, we'll move on to the the revenues, which we recommend to delete. It's it's just covered by by state law and ed law. So in other words, they're requirements. So all we're doing is repeating what's required. So the policy committee determined in this case that there was no need to have this policy. We're simply complying with state law and and education law. So that was why we recommended delete. Questions?
Looks like the policy committee has done a great job. Thank you for all your work on this. It's time-consuming and not the most exciting read in the world. So thank you, policy. The policy committee is Paul is chair and Linda Egner and Uh, and Linda Egner and Tina?
John.
Who?
John.
Oh, John, I'm sorry. Right. John Bogard. Uh, our, uh, that committee. Thank you for your work on that. Tina, is there anyone who is asked to speak to the board tonight?
No, there is no one.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. A motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. John and Jason. Uh, discussion, questions? I, I would like to um. Clarify. And um. On page two. Uh, uh, under F. Under, on the uh, board education meeting calendar. Want everybody to uh, be sure they realize that the meetings. Uh, next year are proposed to be at the middle school auditorium rather than the high school. Uh, the reason for that is that we now have a, an auditorium that is. Uh, technologically uh, advantageous to programs. And uh, it will be a much easier setup and a better setup uh, for everyone. Um, so plus we happy to be in our new, in the new building. So if um. So be aware of that. And I think that was all. We've already changed the um, the one on page five. When we approved the agenda, which was changing that two thousand twenty-one date to the two thousand twenty-two. Any, any discussion? Then all in favor of the consent agenda approving it? Uh, thank you. Motion is carried. Uh, page six, policies. A motion, please, to uh, approve the um, following policies. As revised. Paul and second, uh, Isetta. Discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. Number seven is a motion, please, to approve. The resolution and declaration and appropriation of contingent expense and emergency capital project. Motion. Uh, Tina and Linda? Discussion. Tina, will you call the role? Oh, Linda, did you hear?
No, I was just.
Tina, would you call the role?
Linda.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Tina.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Isetta. Thank you. Motion is carried.
Thank you. We come to the part where we share good news. Does anyone have some good news to share? Paul?
I have three items of good news. Uh, the first one was several of us attended the district concert. I can't remember now, Tuesday night, uh, whatever night it was. And it was uh, two things that about it that really struck me. One was the number of participants. I thought that was great. And then it was the other piece was the number of uh, parents and su- in support of students that came. The auditorium was, was. I mean, every seat wasn't taken, but boy, it was pretty full and I thought that was just wonderful to see. And of course, the student's performance is always exciting.
Yes.
Couple of the things as far as athletics, we had a couple of students be invited to a. Wayne Finger Lakes men and, men and women's exceptional senior game. Uh, March, on March thirteenth. So one of our uh, participants was Haley Peters on the women's side and on the men's side was Brandon Reed. So I think they all had a good time at that. And then I just wanna mention the number of uh. Athletic teams that we have uh, in the spring. Mr. Blankenberg, of course, talked about the ones we had in the, in the fall and in the winter and how many uh. Scholar athletic teams we had. So this is what's happening for the spring. We have baseball, modified JV and varsity. And, and I'll take a quick aside. Many of you know, we've been working on getting a JV baseball team for years. So really excited about that. And, and by the way, modified has over twenty uh, students out for, for modified baseball. So it's looking like our baseball program is building, actually. Softball, we have modified and varsity. Girls track and field, modified and varsity, boys track and field, modified and varsity. Golf, varsity and tennis, modified and varsity. I didn't run the percentage of students. I remember uh, Mr. Blankenberg talked about a forty percent goal. And I think we're, we're pretty close. So anyway, uh, really happy about the amount of student participation in our spring sports. That's it for me tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? John?
Uh, we had some all-league honors for girls basketball. We had a uh, second team all-league. Um, Emma Humbert, Emma Grace Humbert. Um, exceptional senior game. We had three, uh, two in that and one in the head of the sportsman's team. Sportsmanship team uh, was North Rose Wilkett slash Sodas. So that's a very good.
Absolutely.
Yep, very good.
Very good. Anyone else? It's always good to hear about our kids. Um, and under board member requests, comments and discussion. Um, I would like to point out to the board, you did receive uh, the revised board handbook. Uh, with your packet of materials. Um, the committee met to finish up after the workshop we'd had with the, the page sixteen. Uh, that you had wanted uh, some additional uh. Verbiage in. So if you're looking at that. Um, or if you've, if you've had a chance, um. The um. Under, uh, please look particularly at page sixteen. Number three. And there is an additional bullet that was added. It would be the fifth bullet down under number three. Uh, so I'd ask that you please read that and uh, get back to me. Uh, seeing Tina is going to be away next week. Get back to me if, if you're uh, happy with this. Uh, I, the changes that we talked about at the workshop have been made. Uh, the committee met, the committee is uh, Tina Reed, Paul Stetsky and myself. It's completely updated. Um, the appendices are all correct and in order. Um, it's ready for publication for us. Um, I also want to put out um. The offer that if, if some, if there are people in the community. Who are considering be, running for the board or would like to know what the board does. Uh, you're welcome to come in to the district office. And uh, Tina will supply you with a handbook that you can peruse there in the district office. To give you some information on what we do and how we do it. Um, I will say to the community. Um, the perception uh, that the community hears of what the board can do. Is generally a misconception. We are under strict guidelines on what we can and cannot do according to state ed. So um, you might wanna take a look at this if you're considering running for the board. I also. Want to tell the board members. Um, there was um, information sent to you that there is on the BOSI's board. There are three open seats. Um, and if you, any of you are interested in running for that board, you can do that as well. Uh, it's a three-year term, but the nominations have to be in by Monday, this coming Monday at four o'clock. So if that's something any of you board members would like to run for, let me know and I will be more than happy to nominate you. Uh, and the last thing I wanted to make sure the board was, was cognizant of. Uh, is that the, uh, we've had some changes in our May meetings. And the. On May fifth will not only be the budget hearing at six o'clock. But that will be followed by a board meeting. And because the board meeting is that day, it is not going to be on the twelfth. Now also, the May meeting scheduled for May twenty-sixth. Our meeting is canceled in lieu of the board hopefully. Hopefully attending the four county board meeting. I seem to have lost my page. Uh, the, the four county board meeting uh, is an in-person meeting and um. Our, help me, Linda. Um, that, help me, who's gonna be there?
Um, Betty Rosa, the New York State Education Commissioner, probably first time appearing in Wayne County. Could, uh, Mr. Norwood, Mr. Norwood is there.
And.
Yeah, the regional, the other regional director, and I don't have my notes with me because I'm not at home. I'm trying to remember her last name, maybe Reynolds, but so be four people there.
What I did.
I did ask at the last meeting if anyone had any topics they wanted them to be addressing as they each speak. Uh, the legislative committee has worked on a number of uh, areas that they feel are very important and crucial, especially in rural school districts. So we're gonna be forwarding them, but any input that you have would be appreciated as well.
Yeah, this is a, a real opportunity. Normally, these people are not available. Uh, and coming to four counties is really a. Uh, and of honor to have them, but it's also going to be a very informative evening.
What time is that at, Cindy?
I, I believe it's five thirty or six.
Tina, can you bring that up on your computer in the, in the uh, in the board packet? Wasn't it in the board packet?
That, no, that was not in your board packet. I can look. I'll look on the four county website.
Thanks.
It came through four county, I'm sure.
It did. And I ran a copy and I don't know where, what I did with it. Um, it's, it's, it, it'll be in Geneva. It's a dinner meeting again. Uh, and again, uh, you'll need to uh.
Register.
Let Tina know that you're going to go and that, uh, what your choice for dinner would be.
It's, it's at Club Eighty-Six. Five thirty is registration, conversation, six fifteen student entertainment, six thirty dinner, seven PM speakers. And it's um, Betty Rosa, Chancellor Lester Young Junior, Regent Nor, Wade Norwood and Regent Ruth Turner.
I understand they're going to ask them to speak to some specific things. And then um, it, it will be open for um, the membership to uh, ask whatever they want. So it's a, a good meeting. So that's in lieu of our, our own board meeting. All right. Uh, does anyone else have anything for comments or discussion from the board? Well, then at this time, um, we need to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a specific employee. Uh, may I have a motion to that effect? Uh, Jason and Tina? Um, any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. To all of you who are here, uh, we will not be doing any further business. Uh, we will simply be coming back to adjourn the meeting. Uh, so I'll bid you good night and have a good evening. Thank you for attending.